According to this. Could everybody please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do not have any adjustments tonight. Any public comments, Sarah? Do we have anybody?
No.
Okay, communications.
Couple of communications to announce. At the end of April, I received a letter from the Maine Department of Education congratulating us on the successful completion of the addition and renovation to Margaret Chase Smith School and the retrofitting to the existing Sanford Junior High School, which would be the new Sanford Pride Elementary for that. And then I also received a letter from Scott Brown at the Maine Department of Education, the Director of School Facilities, congratulating us on the successful completion of Sanford High School and Sanford Regional Technical Center Construction Project. So those were, one of our, obviously thank everyone who was involved in that, but that was important for the Department of Education to be able to close those out. So, well done there. And then I also received a communication also from the Maine Department of Education that Carl J. Lamb School has been identified for Tier 3 Comprehensive Support and Improvement, also known as CSI, and that's not the TV show, under ESA for the 2023-24 school year by the Maine Department of Education. This is based on the school having all student populations including economically disadvantaged, special education, and multilingual learners experiencing challenges across multiple accountability indicators in 2022, 2023 for grades 3 and 4. Those were the grades that were included in the accountability system. The indicators are attendance, academic achievement in math and literacy, and academic growth in math and literacy. The school achievement, the school will remain in Tier 3 status for three years until the next identification cycle in the fall of 2027. Support from the Maine Department of Education will include a planning grant, leadership coaching assigned by the DOE, school improvement funds, and professional development opportunities. Our Carl J. Lamb Principal Sherry Barron, Beth Lambert, Steve Busier and I attended an introductory webinar on how the designation was determined and the requirements of a Tier 3 school. Later this month, on May 31st, there'll be an additional webinar to discuss applying for grant funds and next steps. The good news is that Carl J. Lamb already has a leadership team and has completed a comprehensive needs assessment, both of which are required. It is important to point out that Carl J. Lamb School houses all of our Sanford's elementary school self-contained programs for our most disabled students in autism, life skills, et cetera, which impacts the school's overall performance for that. So that also received a communication there as well. And then we also received a communication as well from the Maine Department of Education, letting us know that our request for application for the Maine Department of Education, and we have been conditionally approved for a contract for the pre-K partnership pilot grant. And that's exciting news, and I will, Steve Busier will be able to share more about that in his report later. So, good news there on the pre-K fund. And those were the communications.
Thank you so much. Moving on to committee reports.
If, at this time, if we could bring, if Mr. Peterman wants to come up, and we can also bring our invited guest today to come and also talk about, from the electrical program, the electrical wiring program, the solar installation update, if we could be able to come back and provide that, give us an update, we'd appreciate it. You can also, you can also sit down there and just have to make sure that you push the button, the push button there where it says that, and then a green light will come on.
Just like that?
That works. Well done, Mr. Fecto.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. I want to start off by saying, I'm sorry it's taken this long to report out on the solar project, but it's taken a lot of behind-the-scenes efforts between the school committee, Mr. Peterman, the school, and students, and Mr. Desmond here. So, we're going to just start off by watching the video, and hopefully this will explain a lot of what we ended up doing and what we took on, and then we'll answer questions and report out a little bit more later on. We're going to have one team do it, a wire pole. We're going to have a small group putting up a box. We're going to have the rest of you basically handling panels. So, you know, it's not just about coming in and putting wires together and lights come on. There's a lot more to it, and there's a lot of jobs out there that are unfilled right now that they're looking for quality people to fill them. And what do they want? They want the basics. They want the social skills. They want the work ethic. They want, you know, show up and do work. So, I think that's the value of our programs. We instill that. I'm fortunate enough where I have a lot of live work, we say. Basically, projects that we do through the school and outside. We have a house we build. This gives them opportunities to actually see live work from an electrician like Jay and his company. They get the real feel, and they understand, wow, this is why it's important that we know this stuff.
Mr. Fecto and I have known each other for almost 10 years because of our involvement with Skills USA. So, I was an old competitor in Skills USA, and after graduating and leaving and doing my career work, I became a board member with Skills USA, where Mr. Fecto was also a board member. And so I met him, and I got to know him, and started getting involved with his class here. So, we started working on this program, and we sat down and just designed, okay, what would, what would work to put some panels up to produce some power for the school so the school would be happy, but also what could we do to make it so that year after year he could teach with this system?
So, this is a microgrid. It's really small in comparison to what we're going to do. This simulates basically what a grid would be for a home. So, this here would just sustain the usage of mostly this building and a few other things that are, depending on the consumption of this, it's just a minor amount. Like, so it's powered up right now? You said 5 KW? 5 KW, which is a small amount for the school.
So, we're still putting in a final portion of this, which is going to be a small piece on the ground, that each year we're going to be able to come out and turn it off. The students are going to be able to take the panels off and see what it would be like to put panels onto that system year after year. So even though we've already put these panels on the roof, and we're not going to take them down, we're going to have that opportunity for future classes to work with that system. And in the end, it'll give them the ability to see how these panels and these systems work at different times of year, different sun conditions, to hopefully engage them in ways that they haven't been engaged before.
They're going to be able to test it, be able to get the readings, get the understanding of it in lingo, along with the mock-up that I have in my classroom.
So, we chose the Generac PowerCell, not because it's Generac, but because in 2019, Generac actually bought this system from a company called Pica Energy. And Pica started right in Westbrook, Maine. So, the engineering office for Generac's clean energy is right in South Portland. So, being able to connect with those engineers, being able to connect with those support teams there, we were able to build a relationship and get all of the Generac components donated at zero cost to the school. From there, I reached out to Green Tech Renewables at Asako, who's my major supplier in my day-to-day work. Told them what we're doing, and immediately they said, yep, how can we help? They found us 28 panels that they donated to the project at no cost, as well as all of the racking and all of the mounting. My owner and my company believe in the project as well, and they're donating not only my time, but the time of the helpers and some of the additional material and wiring that goes into it.
Make sure that your points of contact with the couplings and connectors are going to be... So, again, this was just mostly set up for educational purposes, and that was the big sell for us. I wanted to give the students the opportunity to be able to see, plug, and play with this. You know, roughly this whole project, when it's said and done, it's going to be somewhere around $30,000 if we were to pay for it. That's tough to go through and ask for and budget it. So it was nice to have this all generated through the companies and the sponsorships that we've gotten throughout the whole process. It's been great.
By the end of this, with an additional grant from Generac to cover the administrative cost of permitting and everything else, this has cost the school and the town nothing, and it's going to give the electrical class years of education in the future.
There's so much value in this, and to have just employers out there, just give students and give them a try. Giving them the opportunity when they get it and they see the investment, it's life-changing, for sure.
If we're able to connect to a student that otherwise wouldn't have gotten into electrical because all they think it is is pulling wire, and now they see a whole nother side of it, those are the people that we need in the field. Those are the people that we need to keep innovation going, as well just keeping the infrastructure of Maine intact.
Well, thank you for having me here. So, I was in the video. My name's Jay Desmond. I'm from Northeast Electric, a division of Gowan Clean Power. We're out of Portland, Maine. And we'll kind of talk about some of the nuts and bolts of the project, but also kind of how it's still going to be giving back moving forward. So if we look at just year-to-date, just from January to last Friday when I pulled this report up, we've already produced over 4.5 megawatts of power through these panels on the fieldhouse, as well as that ground-mounted array. I don't have what your school consumes for power. I know this is nowhere near what it is actually consuming in a day, in a month, or a year, but just kind of looking at it and seeing that this is something that's going to be giving back over time. We can see sort of the monthly breakdown on it here. But if we look at the next one, when we look at just the nine months that this system's been operating, I don't have the number right off the top of my head, but we're, so just in the last nine months, we're over 7.5 megawatts of power. When we look at it in terms of, you know, some of the things that this has done, it's taken basically 282 trash bags out of landfills. It's offset over 509 gallons of gasoline. These are small numbers right now, but if you multiply it by 25 years that these systems are rated to be, that impact that already this school's going to be able to start to offset and give back is just going to explode and just going to amplify and continue. But the amazing thing on top of that is, it's not only producing power for the school. It's not only offsetting your footprint, but it's giving Mr. Fecto and his students an opportunity year after year to get exposed to this equipment. Something I never had, something many of my colleagues have never had that opportunity until we get out into the field. On our next slide here, we're going to see the state of Maine has actually gone into some pretty ambitious goals for the next 30 years going forward. 2030, the state of Maine is looking to be producing 80% of its consumed power through green alternative means. By 2050, they're looking to produce 100% of that. Right now, or as of the last report, we are less than 25% produced internally in the state of Maine. An independent report puts us at less than 10% of that from solar energy. We think of that as wind turbines as being that other big component for Maine's energy. That's a long ways to go. What do we need to get there? We need people to buy in. We need people to invest, but we need the workers to do the jobs. Right now, we're looking at about, if I can find my notes, we're looking at needing about 15,000 people in the clean energy field. And being nowhere near that, or sorry, 30,000, right now, we're at 15,000. In that 15,000, the majority of that is actually not installers. The majority of that is actually insulators, because in the state of Maine, people that are putting up insulation is considered part of that green energy initiative. People putting up heat pumps. The state of Maine is less than 678 solar installers right now. We look at the graphs down at the bottom, and we see the explosion of solar installation in the state of Maine. You see that big blue and that big green, and where that big blue and green switched from being mostly blue to mostly green, that's when the state of Maine enacted the co-op solar farming, where what we had as solar power plants became co-op solar farms. The majority of our power production is being created in those large power plants. The smaller parts at the bottom are grids like on the school, grids like on houses. It's my belief and many others that that's the area that needs to grow, and that's the area that needs to expand. The growth that we've seen in these last three years of production, you cannot account all of that to the almost 700 installers in the state of Maine, which means unfortunately, most of those installers are out of state. So, yes, Maine is catching up on its green energy goals, but unfortunately, the benefit of that is not staying in the state of Maine. So, we need employees. We need installers, and we need people that are really working towards growing that in the state. And that's why it's really important to me that a project like this is underway and continued growth is underway. You know, the statement that clean energy is a high-paying job, yes, it's publicly out there. I can attest that I do just fine being a solar installer, but also, we are paying more and more for our electricians, our plumbers, our carpenters than ever before, because these are the jobs that we need more than anything else to keep Maine running, to keep Maine growing, and to keep us on track to move forward. So I'm going to kind of go off-script and just put a plug on career and technical education for a moment, which I'm sure I might be taking words out of your mouth. But these technical schools and technical programs that we have today, they are nothing like the vocational programs of their past. They're not like the shop classes that they've come to replace. The students that are going through these programs and then continuing into the field and getting their master's degrees, or their master licenses, or getting their nursing licenses, or cosmetology licenses, I hope that all of you can invest in them and believe in them like your D1 athletes, like your Ivy League graduates, because these individuals have passion, have skills, and have value that is not more important, but it is as important as those other careers, trades, and paths. So my hope is that when you have an opportunity to embrace and support a master electrician, a master plumber, an RN, a cosmetologist, or a chef that you have working in one of your tech centers, that you give them whatever they need, because it takes a lot for somebody to go from one of those high-producing, high-paying careers to being a teacher. And I can tell you that one of my challenges during this program has been, I valued so much of the time I had with the students, but it was always in such small amounts. That I wish that I had opportunities where we had those students in front of us longer. And that these programs weren't looked at as necessarily being extracurricular or extra programs, but core curriculum classes, where these students would be able to really spend those times with those teachers, with those professionals, to get the training that they need. So, yeah, a little bit off-script, but got to use the soapbox when I've got it.
So, at this time, I'd like to have our other guests come up, and then you can have Q and A's. I have a student that's out in California that I don't know if he was able to zoom in or not, but he was a senior that graduated last year. He was one of those students that was on the roof. I'm hoping that he's here so you can ask questions and stuff, but he actually is out there training in California. He's went to UMaine full ride, and I'll turn it over to you guys. Are there any questions?
He is not.
He is not. Thank you. It's okay.
So, hi, everybody. My name's John Wirons. I'm the owner of Gowan Clean Power Systems. That's the company that Jay works for. So, I'll be real brief. I just want to emphasize the importance of, you know, these technical programs, because our biggest challenge is that businesses finding young, you know, incentivized employees is a really big challenge. You know, Jay threw the numbers out there of how short we are of people that are in this industry. The future is electric, 100%. I mean, all the trades are important, but, I mean, having skilled electricians that are really passionate about it is just crucially important to the future of Maine's economy. And again, to Jay's point, a lot of the people that are coming up here and doing the green energy installations are coming from out of state. So those are missed opportunities for whatever really good jobs and actually a really exciting career and an exciting future that I think didn't really exist in the same way in decades past. There's just so much innovation going on in this industry, and, you know, solar is such an incredible power source, you know, not to mention offshore wind, but, you know, solar is the product that, you know, we can really get our hands on and really install here in Maine. So, thanks for the opportunity to be part of the project, and thanks, Mr. Fecto. You know, it's really exciting for us, and I hope we get other opportunities with other school districts. So if you have friends running other schools, you know, make sure they all know about it, and we'll do what we can to help them too. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
My name's Jason Rowe. I am in a senior year in electrical wiring, and I just want to say thank you, Mr. Fecto, Jay, Mr. Peterman, for giving me the opportunity to work on basically the future. Solar is going to be a big thing coming in the future, and just want to say thank you to you guys for giving me the opportunity to work on it.
Thank you. I guess, questions, comments? I'll start. I guess one of the, you know, well said with that in terms of the promoting the program and the need in career and technical education. It's always great when you see companies stepping up, because they recognize the importance of educating the next workforce, being able to be such a resource that we're able to take advantage of. I guess I didn't realize it, but it looks like how this was constructed will be able to maybe be deconstructed so the next class can come in to also be able to do that. I know in my mind, I didn't quite realize. I thought it'd be set up, and then we'd be saying, all right, where are we going to be going next to be able to look at that? So that was a takeaway for me that I think is really going to be helpful going forward, so that it's going to be something that can repeat itself to make sure that we're giving our SRTC graduates right, the latest and greatest, what they need to go out and be transitioned to whatever their next step is.
And that was our goal. Originally, we were hoping to do the, also the roof as well, but due to several factors, safety, time, just with the students, we wouldn't be able to do that. But the actual, the actual ground mount is what we're hoping to do, because we, there's a lot that goes into that, just even putting the, I remember pouring the concrete that day, and we had it in the wrong spot, and measuring, and we were out, the amount of stuff that goes into getting that perfect to where it goes, it just is amazing. So, the goal, when we first started going through this process and sitting with the school committee and saying, this is what we're going to do, that was our number-one goal, is education. Yes, we want to give back to the school. We want to give back and try to save that and give them, but having them get the hands-on, taking it down, doing it safely, and then being able to erect it back up again is bonus. And then they can, you know, we can work on the arrays and, you know, how it has to be for the sun and stuff. So, that was our goal.
I just want to say thank you to all of you. It's absolutely amazing what you have been able to do to give to, to give to our students and to the school. My husband works in renewable energy, so I recognize some of the terms and everything, so I can appreciate how amazing this is. Thank you so much. It's just wonderful, and it's so exciting. I can't wait to see how it just grows from here. And I appreciate so much your time and your energy and your willingness to work with the school. It's just amazing. Thank you.
Hi, too. I'd just like to echo what Sid said. I have a student who has graduated who went through your program. She's completed a year of college and is now circling back to what I think her father and I always knew was her passion for electrical wiring. You know, they kind of got to get out there and find their own way. And I have a freshman who is very interested in taking the electrical wiring class as well. My question is, for the job component, is the industry in 18-plus, or are there summer job opportunities?
So I'll say that when it comes to the electrical field, maybe not in particular, but when it does come to the electrical field, it is hard under 18 to do necessarily internships or work-study programs. We have done it with some high school students that are under the age of 18, but usually they are already in a class or have a helper's license through that school. As a whole, for the most part, it is a licensured program. So you do have to have a helper's license and be then working under a master or journeyman license, which means we can't do internships in the electrical field. We have to hire people. So it gets a little tricky because of licensure-ship in the state of Maine. So if anybody knows anybody in Maine, whatever it is, legal licensures, and being able to find some loopholes or find some ways that we can get coverage for those students to be able to work under us would be amazing. I know Tim does a lot of work in the field with it, and yes, we, not only ourselves, but many companies are looking for summer help, are looking for full-time help, are looking for help.
Mr. Fecto, can you remind us of the timeline? Because I know Grace had her helper's license, but I can't remember during the two-year program when she got that.
She got it for her senior year, the start of it, so that they could do live work. And it goes for two years. The great thing in the state of Maine is that you can pay for your helper's license once you're done, and you just keep it. You just, you don't have to do any schooling. I think it's, yeah, 25 bucks, but during school, it's completely free. And I will touch base on that as well. The state has offered up what's called the ELO program, which we have currently over, I don't know, even though the number 200 for this school, I think. I currently have seven in my class that are gone Tuesday and Thursday, every day. They go to job sites, so there is a little bit that the employer has to worry about the insurance and the liability side of that. But they do an agreement with the student. The student goes to work right after their first morning sessions, and then they work for that day, and then they have to report out. The great thing for me is that bringing it back to the students that are not going, it actually gives us talking points on what they actually got able to do that day. So it opens up a lot of dialogue for the students. So having seven, I could probably have everybody in my class right now working for somebody, but then I would have to find something to do during that time, right? Just kidding. So there are opportunities, but most of it's liability for everybody to be able to drive and that type of thing. So, we try to make every effort, because getting them out in the field is what needs to happen. I'm fortunate enough that Jason, actually, he works for me. So, I'm able to give him the opportunity, and he actually helped me put solar on my house. So it was, it was nice to get other students involved. And I try to give those that don't get the opportunity to get with somebody to at least get a little bit of hands-on. So, there are great things. You've just got to take a chance on these fine young folks. Otherwise, I won't know.
Jason, what school do you go to?
Sanford.
You're a Sanford High kid?
I am.
Oh, awesome. We're glad you're here.
Thank you.
Thanks for everything, and, you know, as an electrician's wife, keep doing it. We have one of your guys, too.
Thank you, folks. Well done. Keep up the good work. Thank you for coming in this evening, sharing that.
And a special thank you to Sarah for putting that video together. You made me look great.
I actually wondered if it, if it was you, if it was the other, the other program, SRTC.
Oh, John.
Great job. Did they help? Yeah.
Thank you. That's awesome. Okay, we're moving on to superintendent's reports.
Sure. As always, we'll start off with our student rep reports, but before we do that, it is our next-to-the-last scheduled school committee meeting. Our next meeting after this evening is June 10th, which will follow Sanford High School's graduation on June 5th. And so, we wanted to take this opportunity this evening to thank two of our student representatives who have served with us for two years, Aiden and Emma. And I know, on behalf of the school committee and the central office team, we wanted to thank you for all of your contributions, your dedication and your commitment to really helping the work that we do keep it focused on also making sure what we're doing also is what's best for students. And so you came through that with... what we're doing also is what's best for students. And so you came through that with looking at what's best for students and what's best, you represented yourselves and you represented your peers in this work. I know as I look back on it, there's been times we talked about schedule, we talked about technology and cell phones, some of those real hot-button issues that I know was really important. And you guys did an excellent job in terms of sharing that information and advocating and also helping us to be able to do that. So we could make you come to your last meeting on the 10th and you're more than welcome for that. I'm sure we would be curious to also hear about the end of the year activities, but in the event that you don't, we wanted to take the time this evening to recognize you both and thank you. And on behalf of the central office, school committee, entire school department, we got a nice little thank you card for you that I can present to you now.
Guys are awesome.
Thank you, guys. It's been awesome. And I'm very grateful that I got to do this for the past few years. So, thank you.
Can we put you, are you comfortable talking about what your future plans may be? Are we in a position to be able to do that for right now? I think we're all interested in that. Go ahead.
So, in August, I'm gonna move out to Pennsylvania. I'm gonna go to Penn State University at the, the main university park campus. Right now, I am a astronomy and astrophysics major, looking to maybe switch to aerospace engineering, but that's kind of where I'm at right now.
Awesome.
Um, I also just wanted to thank you all. This has been an incredible experience over the past two years and it's given me a lot of skills that I'll take into my adulthood. But I'm gonna be going to UNH and I'm in their honors program, so I'm majoring in biology. And then I'm following a pre-vet track, so like, it'll be four years at UNH and then I'm gonna apply to vet school and hopefully get my DV, I think it's DMV, I think. But basically that'll let me be a vet. And then hopefully I'll open like my own vet clinic one day. But yeah, no, I'm excited. Yeah, no, I really wanted to thank you all though.
Great.
That's awesome, you guys.
So, so one of the things we contemplated getting you was probably like a big plaque that you can hang up in your dorm room, because we know that is super cool. So instead of that, we passed on it and we've got something there that you might be able to use to, for something else to help you going in in any way, to help you with your transition. But thank you. We wish you the best of luck. Now, it's not time to leave. That's my intro to work into the next couple of things. We're ready for any reports that you have and then first, and we can take that. And then after that, we will transition right into the latest edition of the Sanford Spotlight.
So speaking of graduation, pretty soon, senior week is gonna start up. So we have some fun things that we've planned out. Senior picnic, which I'm pretty sure is next Friday. Next Friday, yes. There's gonna be a Kona Ice truck. We're gonna have burgers and hot dogs. It's just gonna be a fun day at the rec. And then the Monday after is the awards night and game night, which is gonna be fun. I don't, I don't know how much I can give away about everything, but, and then the next day is senior banquet. Will be a fun little dinner for everyone and then graduation and it's all over. So, I don't know, it's gonna be fun.
Just a little project grad thing.
Yes, and then after graduation, we get to go to the Arcade Apex, right? Is what it's called? And I'm excited to drive go-karts.
Nice. Alright, good.
Um, I have art stuff. Surprise, surprise. We had the art show two weeks ago, I think, and NAHS put on a sale of things made by the students and Ms. Warner and we ended up raising way more money than we planned on. We sold some stuff at lunches too, so we were able to pay for the seniors to get all their cords and start up the account. So we, hopefully we'll be able to do a field trip next year, but yeah.
Um, so National Honor Society, we just had our Day of Carrying field trip. I think it was last Wednesday and we went to the Kennybunk Charlie Museum and everyone was kind of like assigned their own job and we just kind of like worked together to kind of like do like a little cleanup. And we go there each year, so it's like, it's nice to kind of go back and kind of help out. And then also, National Honor Society, they're having day, or it's, it's like reverse induction. What's it called? Senior send-off. And so that will just be to recognize the seniors that are leaving and stuff. It's, it's like reverse induction, but it'll just be to recognize them. Yes, and there will be candles. But yeah, no, that'll be a nice ceremony. I think it's, it's the 29th, so.
Yeah, and big kudos to all of our Sanford High School students. Last Friday was a big testing day for our underclassmen with that. And we really appreciate all of their efforts. We had a really good turnout on that day. We also coordinated that with seniors in terms of some project grad announcement information. It worked out really well to be able to do that. And then in the afternoon, after really going after it with that testing, it was then the This Is Us celebration. So I know I was really pleased with all the hard work and coordination that went into that and the turnout and buy-in from our students for that. So, kudos to them for it. And the art show was outstanding. That was well done. We've got, you know, obviously our student reps are well represented on that and very talented as well. So well done with that. Do you want to move right into giving us the latest Sanford Spotlight that's, hasn't been released yet? This is the release party right here.
Emma, can I just ask you one question? That senior send-off, is that just for students or parents?
Oh, no, um, parents and family are welcome to.
And that's on?
The 29th.
The 29th. Okay. Okay, thank you.
So I don't know if Aiden and Emma are gonna kick this one off, because I think I recognize a couple of people in this picture.
The Sanford Elks Lodge held its annual youth banquet on Wednesday, May 8th, to celebrate the academic excellence of Sanford High School's top 50 students. And the top 10 students were also individually recognized, Emma and Aiden, during the ceremony. And you can watch it on WSSR TV's YouTube page. SMS students win state drug awareness video contest. A group of Sanford Middle School students were recognized for their outstanding work in raising awareness about the dangers of drug use. SMS students attend UNE Leadership Summit. Two dozen students from Sanford Middle School in grades five through eight recently had the opportunity to attend the Sixth Annual Middle School Student Leadership Summit at the University of New England in Bitterford. SRTC students inducted into NTHS. Over 100 Sanford Regional Technical Center students were inducted into the National Technical Honor Society on Wednesday, May 8th, and the Performing Arts Center. And Portland Symphony Orchestra visits elementary schools. The Portland Symphony Orchestra's talented string quartet paid a visit to Carl J. Lamb Elementary School, Sanford Pride Elementary School, and Margaret Chase Smith School this past Thursday, May 9th.
At Margaret Chase Smith, students, they're preparing for their upcoming art show and the Installation Art Club students are working together to prepare collaborative art projects for display during the show. At Carl J. Lamb, pre-课 students are, they read Bear Shadow while learning about shadows and reflections and they had fun playing with shadows outside on the playground. At Sanford Middle School, on April 30th, JMG and AquaPonics students traveled to Brunswick to visit Canopy Farms and their cafe. And then at Sanford Pride, we wanted to thank Kona Lee and everyone who helped the Sanford Pride staff win the Kona Ice Teacher Appreciation Contest. And this was a fantastic treat for the staff. And there's newsletters linked below to read more about those stories. And then also, at Sanford High School, there was the AP Research Symposium. So they had, it's the Advanced Placement students, they showcased their research projects all at the annual AP Capstone Symposium and it happened on Wednesday, May 15th, in the Agora. And this allowed students to present their findings from their year-long college-level research endeavors. There's more below, there's a lot of links. And then also, at Sanford Pride Elementary, they had their Career Day. So, fourth grade students recently had the opportunity to explore a wide range of potential career paths during the school's Career Day on Friday, May 10th. The event allowed students to engage with professionals from various fields, planting seeds about many avenues for future success. And then also the seventh and eighth graders, they had their spring concert. So it was Thursday night in the Performing Arts Center and they, it featured performances by jazz band, seventh grade band, eighth grade band, and also combined sixth and eighth grade choir. And so there's newsletter linked below. And then also, SHS, they also had their spring concert. So there were band ensembles performed at the Performing Arts Center on Tuesday, May 7th. And then it was under the guidance of Ryan Geary, who's the choir director at the high school. And it kicked off the evening festivities with an array of performances of the CCP chorus set at the stage with the rendition of Put a Lit On It by Alan Billingsley. And so there's a newsletter linked below for that as well.
For the highlighted Spartan Times article, it's about how on Monday, May 6th, students from the Sanford High Alternative Education traveled on a field trip to the Gerard Science Building at UNE, where they got to see pools of fish that held close to hundreds of endangered Atlantic salmon. SRTC students placed third in state Ford contests. So, the automotive technology students, Max Jones from Sanford and Dylan Baker from Assabesic, went to CMCC in Auburn to compete in the competition. They placed third against eight teams and they had the opportunity to work on identically bugged 2024 Ford Broncos. Then is the link to the Sanford Community Resource Guide, which is a pillar of assistance for residents, offering a comprehensive array of essential services. These range from provisions like food and clothing. And there's a link to access the Community Resource Guide. Sunbucks Grocery Aid for Low-Income Families. This is a new federal program that will help low-income families purchase groceries during the summer. And eligible families with children aged six to 16 can receive $120 in food benefits for the summer period. There's a link for more information there. School Budget Info. After a series of budget workshops held in March, the Sanford City Council has approved the combined city and school budget for the upcoming fiscal year. There's information to look at the budget in more detail, as well as a link to the 2024, 2025 school year calendar. Then is the area about kindergarten registration. It is open for children five years of age on or before October 15th, as well as a link for more information and assistance in completing the registration. Free meals are offered at the Sanford Schools, including breakfast. And it provides some of the different breakfast service times by each school, as well as the little ad to download the Sanford Spartan app. For the highlights in the Main Street Memo, there's Sanford's Comprehensive Plan, Sanford Farmers Market is back, and Art Walks on Main Street, and a link to read many more things, as well as the various links to stay up to date in the Sanford community.
Well done. Thank you, folks. Appreciate you sharing all the things happening throughout the Sanford School Department. You think it probably touches all different areas, all different levels in terms of that. A lot of great things happening. So thank you in sharing that. We'll be releasing that this week, so we can be pushing that out to the community, as well as pushing that out to students and staff and our various stakeholders. Couple of field trips to announce that have already taken place. The Jaws from Maine Graduate Program did their eighth-grade adventure. That's in Waterville, Thomas College. That was an overnight, May 15th and 16th. And then we also had the All-State Music Festival. Are some students who were able to go up and participate in that this past week on May 15th and May 16th, up at the University of Maine at Orno. Did want to announce, at that musical festival, Sanford High School music teacher and band director Haley Frankor was awarded the Maine Music Educator Association's 2023-2024 Outstanding New Music Educator Award last Thursday at the University of Maine. And congratulations to Haley, well deserved. Just in her time here, our marching band participation has been very much on the increase and on the rise. And that's an opposite trend of what you're seeing in a lot of other areas and programs. So, well deserved. Congratulations to Haley for that. Couple other things I wanted to be able to report out on. Sanford School Department, we received our preliminary workers' comp mod rates recently. And for the 2024-2025 renewal period, our mod rate is 1.69. And that's an improvement over last year, which was 1.86. And so by doing this, that's gonna result in appropriate savings of about $28,000 for the school department. Most of that reduction came from claims of $84,421 in the 2019-2020 coming off of the, the mod. And we've also had a reduction in the value of claims from the period of 2021 and 2022, which is now at about $350,000, is now under $300,000. So, I share that because we're heading in the right direction. We're still probably a little bit higher than they want schools to be with that, but that, we're pretty much well within the norm of doing that. So, all of our focus on safety is paying off, had the right directions. Wanted to thank Steve Bucier, who heads up our safety committee, as well as all of our school department employees for their commitment to be able to do that. Also, the Sanford School Department received an additional $99,287 in revenue recently as part of the multilingual hardship adjustment funds. And that's per Title 20A, Section 15689, subsection 16. And that is based on the comparison of the October 1st, 2023 student enrollment counts and the April 1st, 2024 student enrollment counts when it comes to multilingual students with that. As you know, we had a big, we've had an increase there. And so this is helpful. Those funds will be able to be used for the interpreter services, curriculum materials and supplies to be able to help. Because what you found was, if it was after those enrollment times that you received subsidies. So this is something that is definitely gonna be very helpful for us. And as was mentioned in the, in the latest Sanford Spotlight, the new federal program called Sunbucks, which is summer EBT for children, will help low-income families purchase groceries when school is out for the summer. Eligible families with children aged six to 16 can receive $120 in food benefits for the summer period. The Permanent Sunbucks Child Nutrition Program aims to address child food insecurity by providing funds that families can use to buy groceries during the summer months when kids don't have access to the free reduced-priced school meals. The Maine Department of Health and Human Service Office of Family Independence is implementing the program. Many families will automatically qualify based on their participation in programs like SNAP or TAMP or Main Care or free and reduced school meals. However, families can also apply for the benefits separately with that. Families who are automatically qualified via another program will receive their Sunbucks on an EBT card at the end of June. Families who apply later in the summer months will receive their benefits at the end of the month in which their application is approved for that. The eligibility, here are some of the key details and how the program works. Eligibility, it must be children, must meet the USDA criteria set during the prior school year. And kids automatically qualify if their households receive SNAP, TAMP, FDPIR, or their child is homeless migrant or in foster care. Children approved for free reduced school meals also automatically qualify. Main Care households with income below 185% of the poverty line are eligible. And other families can apply online in late May. As I mentioned, each student will receive a one-time $120 payment for the summer. And benefits will be loaded onto the existing SNAP EBT cards if available. Otherwise, a new card will be issued. And those payments will be dispersed from late June through October as applications are approved. So, more information is on our website for that. Couple other things just to mention, the Sanford Springvale Rotary Club held their annual scholarship breakfast last Thursday and awarded three and awarded three scholarships to three graduating Sanford High School seniors, Sophia Towne, Haley Tarbox, and Ellie Curcio. Congratulations to them. And also wanted to recognize Sanford Regional Technical Center Director Matt Peterman. The Sanford Backpack Program held their annual chocolate benefit fundraiser this past Saturday night. And Mr. Peterman was honored with the Friend of the Backpack Program Award. Very well deserved with that, so. And we just happened to have him in the audience today and he'll be speaking later on to come back with that. But no, wanted to recognize Matt in doing that. And that's the report.
Thank you very much. Lots of exciting information. Directors' reports are next. Mr. Bucier.
Good evening. The first thing I have for you this evening is an update on the pre-K partnership pilot grant. Through funding provided by the Maine's Preschool Development Renewal Grant, the Maine Department of Education has conditionally awarded a pre-K partnership grant to the Sanford School Department. The goal of this grant is to increase the number of eligible four-year-olds attending high-quality public pre-K programming and licensed community partners. A partnership for this grant involves meaningful involvement in planning, developing, and delivering the proposed program for students and families. This grant is a partnership that will be between the Sanford School Department and the Sanford Springvale Y M C A. Under this grant, the Y M C A will operate a pre-K classroom that will provide sixteen students in our community with no cost pre-K programming, similar to what we have in the public school. This is a unique opportunity for us because it opens up the door for those families that may need wraparound services with before care and after care. So the families would have to pay for the before care and after care, but the during-the-day programming would be free for those students. The grant is for one year. The cost of the grant, the award for the grant is $176,000. That would cover the cost for furniture, supplies, and staffing with no additional cost to the school department. The staff will be the Y M C A staff. The Y M C A will oversee the program. The Sanford School Department will provide transportation and meals for students. We are also seeing this as another opportunity to collaborate with professional development with the Y M C A staff. In future years, it's important to know in future years, these students will be included in our subsidy count. So we will have subsidy for these students so we can continue to fund this program moving forward with little to no cost to the school department. So a great opportunity in the community to provide sixteen more slots for students. Right now, we are working to solidify all the ninety-six slots that we have in our school department. We are working off a waitlist right now that has about seventeen students. So we are optimistic that between what the Y M C A has and what we have on our waitlist, that we'll be able to fill those slots. We're hoping to hear back about the contract this week. Once we have the contract, we'll need the chair's signature for approval. And then we'll begin to let families know about the opportunity before us. But pretty exciting opportunity for us and the community. Anybody have any questions?
I just, with the, so I don't know if the Y M C A has students that sort of live in other areas, like close, like Acton with that. Do they have to be residents of Sanford to be able to participate in this?
Yep, this, the target for this program is residents of Sanford. If there is a child that's living in another community that does not have pre-K, they could request a superintendent's waiver to have them attend our pre-K program. But this is really designed for Sanford Springville residents.
Currently, this is a one-year grant?
Currently a one-year grant, yep.
It sounds like it's going to be self, pretty much self-sustainable afterwards.
Because, correct, correct. Because we'd get subsidy for those students, those sixteen students, if we fill those slots.
And so you use the word similar, so what are the differences?
Similar.
That the program would be similar to the pre-K programs that we run within our public schools?
Yep, so similar in terms of it will run during, they'll have to run the same time that we we run. So that eight-to-three timeframe. Similar in terms of they will be using the same curriculum that we use in our pre-K programs. They will be using that same curriculum, which is a pre-K-for-me program. They'll have the wraparound services, that's different, the before care and after care. The setting will be different in terms of it's not a school setting. It's in a childcare-type setting, so that's a little, a little bit different. The staff will be required to be certified staff. The similar in terms of environment, they're going to have similar learning spaces that we have. What will be different at the Y M C A is they have an outstanding outside learning environments that we don't have in our private schools. So some similarities, but some slight differences with that.
And will we be mentoring the hiring process because they're not in the education business?
They will be, they'll be required to have the certifications that we have within the the school department in that program. And so that will be the Y M C A's responsibility because they'll be their employees. But with that, they also, they'll be eligible to attend any training that the D O E puts on. We are going to welcome them to participate in staff development that we have. There will also be a required site visit where the D O E, it's actually done by the D O E, where they will come down and make sure they're meeting the criteria that's established in the pre-K regulations, similar to what we have. The D O E does that for our pre-K programs as well. But at the end of the day, it will be, the Y M C A will be the oversight for that staff.
So do we enter into a year-to-year contract with the Y M C A?
Yep, so what would, we'll do the, we'll have the agreement with the the D O E. And then we will form an M O U. And the M O U will outline, these are the expectations for the school department. These are the expectations for the Y M C A. These are the deliverables we need. So instance, we need the sixteen students in the seats. We need the assessment results back. There'll be some deliverables in there, some of the way in the range that we had with Head Start.
Sure.
The same thing we had with Head Start, that worked, that worked well with that.
Yeah, it was very similar to the arrangement with York County Community Action and Head Start. Yep. Great opportunity, I think, for the Sanford School Department and community.
So I just have a quick question about the the transportation. And I'm assuming meal, meal program, stuff like that is going to intertwine. That's included in the 176, or is that, are we transporting outside of that?
The transportation is included in that 176. And the transportation is only for those students that are there during the school hours. So if a parent needs them dropped off at six o'clock, the parent's going to have to provide transportation for that. Yeah, yeah, some of the way it is in our schools. So we'll keep you posted when we have the final agreement from the D O E. Sarah, are we going to bring up the next presentation? You're going to take my eye to change the slides? So for night, tonight for you, if you go back to the first slide, Sarah. Tonight, we have a follow-up presentation to the presentation we did at our first meeting in May in regards to our use of federal funds. Tonight, we're going to do a little bit of review of what we did the last time, but then go a little bit deeper on the use of those funds. So if we go to the next slide, remember there's four buckets of federal funding that we get. The Title 1A funding are those funds that are addressed to meet the needs of students living in poverty. And for us, that is based on our free and reduced lunch numbers, our economically disadvantaged numbers. That's where that funding comes. So it's really to provide intervention to those students who may need support. And there's also some set aside for homeless students and then family engagement. If you look at Title II, that's Beth's Wheelhouse, and that is professional development for staff. And when we talk about staff, that's all staff, teachers, principals, ed techs. At Title III is funding related to our multilingual learners. We, next year will be the first year we receive funds. So that is exciting for us. And then the Title IV is student support and academic enrichment programs. They call it the well-rounded student. It involves technology, social, emotional learning, safety, that type of stuff. So if you remember this slide from our last meeting, if you look at our, all of our buckets for federal funds, we saw an increase of $26,081.26. Keep in mind that as we look at what drives our budget, that is staff and benefits, salaries and benefits. And so salaries and benefits, that $26,081.26, that's not going to cover our salaries and benefits. So there are some adjustments you'll see that we've made through the years. And then if you look at St. Thomas, we do have to give a segment of our funds to our private schools in our community. And St. Thomas traditionally has accessed those funds, so that's their portion of the funds that we have. So last time, we talked about a school-wide model, moving to a school-wide model for Title I. Traditionally, we have been in a targeted needs system for intervention. We've identified students that were in need of literacy or math support. And those were the students that our Title I teachers worked with. Those were the family engagement activities that we did, it was with those families. And so it was really targeted to just those kids that we identified. Moving to a school-wide model, that's what we've been in the process now for the last, feels forever, but since a long time.
Since October.
Since October. Moving to a school-wide model, trying to explain this for you. Moving to a school-wide model, the funds can be used for all students to support the, all the programs in the school. So supporting all students, looking at data, what are those areas that we feel students need support in? Using our M T S S teams, our intervention teams, and our coaches to look at that data to determine what interventions are needing, and then delivering those interventions. And so those interventions delivered by our Title I teacher, we've always had those Title I teachers, we're still going to have a Title I teacher that's going to be working with those students that need that intervention that we've had before. We're going to have that Title I coach is also going to be an interventionist. So they're going to be working with students as well in this model. Up until there, it's going to look pretty similar to what we've had in the past. The piece underneath that is the change. Our ed techs, our literacy ed techs that we've had in the building in grade one, we are reallocating how those ed techs are used. The rationale behind that is because this is going to be our kiddos that we had in pre-K, those ninety-six kids we had in pre-K are now going to be first graders next year. So those kids have really had a strong foundation. We've seen it in kindergarten this year. They know how to do school. They know how to interact with one another. Are there still issues? Yep, but they know how to interact with one another. And so we are feeling like that level of intervention that we need in first grade, we've done that with pre-K and K. So with those ed techs, they are now going to become interventionists that can work where their need is in grades one through four. So if we haven't, let's say we have a group of third graders that need to work on fluency. It's a short-term intervention. That these four kids, they need some work in this classroom, and these three in this classroom. We now can use that ed tech to go into the classroom, right into the classroom where everybody else is, provide that intervention, short-term. It could be a week, it could be two weeks. But to provide that short-term intervention and then be able to step out. So it's a more fluid model in terms of providing intervention. It's also cost, we talked about our budget, how our Title I funds have been shrinking, 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 shrinking. This also is a way to help us preserve the system that we have, given the time, the budget constraints that we have. And then if you look at the bottom, family engagement, we can now use our family engagement funds for the whole school. So it can be all parents that we can invite into into the system of way we use funds. And you're going to see how we are creative and how we're using our family engagement funds in, as we go deeper into the budget. If you just hold on one second, I'll take questions on this, I'll come back. But I think I want to do the next slide and then come back to this. So if you look at the next slide, the next slide. Our Title I, we're going to be taking our Title IV funds and Title I funds and putting them all into one bucket. So as we look at, what does that mean? So if you look at C G L, well, all our buildings, actually, you have a literacy coach interventionist. Each building is going to have their coach interventionist. That's exciting because they will be in the building. They won't have to travel. They'll have their own students that they can keep track of the data. They're going to own that data. They're going to know who those kids are. So we feel that that is a step up for us. They're also going to be providing intervention. In addition to that, we'll have one literacy interventionist, that Title I teacher. And then we will have ed techs as the budget allows. Currently, we are slated to have two ed techs at C G L for literacy. M C S, that's one literacy ed tech at M C S because one is taken in another position. So there's one there currently. And in S P E, same thing, there's only one literacy ed tech underneath. The math interventionist, each building has their math interventionist, which is a teacher. And then look at S P E. We have that outreach first-ten coordinator. We talked about early intervention and how early intervention and family engagement is so important. And so part of our family engagement funds will be used to pay for that, half of that outreach position at Sanford Pride Elementary. That position has supported all of our elementary schools into that work that we've done with pre-K and K transition. So if you think about the transition activities that we've done, the basics campaign, the high-quality book campaign, the nights they've had to welcome kids in, we've been doing that across all our elementary schools. That's what that first-ten outreach position is helping to support. You have the staffing costs there, and then you have the family engagement funds that have been allocated there. So that's a total budget amount that we have there. In addition, homeless transportation, we take, we spend money on homeless transportation. Part of that comes out of here, part of it comes from other grants that we apply for throughout the year. Summer school, that's some of this class of summer school. Next year, we're going to be looking to apply for summer grants for summer school that they offer every year. That's built in this budget to be able to do that. And then St. Thomas School, that's the amount that we have to give over to St. Thomas to support those folks. So if you look at it, you take all that cost, it comes to 1.17 more, switch the slide to me. $1,174,882.51, that's the cost of Title I. Next slide. So if you look at that, remember we're taking our Title I funds, and we're taking our Title IV funds to come up with that amount. So that's how we're spending that, those two titles, Title I and Title IV. Any questions on what I just explained? If you want to go back to the back, back. Yeah, why don't we start there? Any questions?
I do. So can you just touch upon, because I've, I've had, you know, kids in Title I and definitely benefit from the push-in model at the middle school. So when I, when I'm looking at that and I'm hearing you, so is it only the ed techs that are pushing in? Or did I, or is it also the title teachers? Because I remember as a parent, you know, you have the parent engagement, you go and you have them part of the little group, and you're in another room, and the kids are pulled out. So the point of this, if I'm hearing correctly, is that those kids are not having to be removed from the classroom anymore, that they're sort of, not only are they getting the extra help with either the coaches or the Title I teachers in the classroom, but other kids that may or may not need that extra help are also gaining from it, or ones that are on the teetering edge.
There will be, there still will be some students that are pulled out for small group instruction.
Okay.
But there will be sometimes where there's push-in. And then, and the good thing about this is if I'm pushing in, if I'm, let's say I'm the Title I teacher or the ed tech, and I'm pushing in, I know I'm working with Johnny and Suzie, those are the two students I'm supposed to be working with. But let's say Fred just moved in at the beginning of the week and Fred needs help as well. That, that teacher can now take Fred to help, to help work, they can work with him. Before, our Title I, you could only work with those Title I kids. And so now it allows for that flexibility. So it's a combination, could be pull-out if the need is there, could be push-in. But then they can pull the kids that are in need without having to go through that formality and that process with that.
Okay. Okay. And then when you were, when you're looking at sort of like the other schools, when there was like the, the discan, there was just, it's not obviously even because of staffing, like the staffing numbers were kind of off, like MCS was less, I'm assuming.
Yep, sir, can you go to that slide that has them? And like I said, MCS and SPE only have one ed tech in each one of those. With Title I funds, we need to spend the most money in our highest poverty school. So our highest poverty school is SPE. And earlier tonight, Matt mentioned Carlam School being a high-needs school. We also need to put some, make sure we're spending some money there. And so you could look there, that's based on need and how those funds are allocated.
So they, but they, so I took that as that they had more, okay, okay. I think it's because it says staffing costs is what kind of gets me.
That, that staffing cost?
Yeah.
When you look at spend more, they're looking at dollar amount, not staff.
Okay. And then there's even amount of first graders at each school, they have the same amount of classroom sizes? In the sense of like, they all have four first-grade classrooms? If we're giving them all the same amount of staff?
I can't answer that off the top of my head with a hundred percent certainty. I believe they all have four first grades next year.
CJ has three.
Three?
CJ has three first-grade classrooms, okay. And then when you're talking about, because this is a big change for some people. Like this is a huge, huge change, especially for those of us who, am I the only one who have Title I kids? Yeah, I mean, so it's hard for me to wrap my head around it also, but change can be good. When, just the logistics, I'm assuming that every school is going to have someone sort of in charge. Because what I, my understanding of talking to you more about this was that those ed techs are not, it's not just going to be first grade now. It's going to go up to fourth grade. So if there's a teacher in fourth grade that's like, I could really use some help, like who's going to be helping with the logistics of that staffing? And I know I'm getting in the weeds and probably digging too deep, but that's me.
No, I think that's a good question because one of the big things with this change in the model is data. Data drives the intervention train. And so it'll be the MTSS teams, the intervention teams that are looking at that data to determine where is the need and what's going to, who's going to get that service? And where's, where are the staff going to go to support those students? So there'll be a team approach, the coach interventionist, as well as the rest of the members of that MTS team will determine where that staff member goes and which students receive support from time to time.
Because as what you, you know, to your point about the pre-K and that half those students have gone through pre-K. And then we are hoping that the numbers, I don't know what the data is, but like, you know, that they did better with learning in kindergarten with reading and then in first grade that they'll be even a step ahead. And really those COVID, my understanding is the third graders, current third graders are the ones that, you know, were behind because of COVID. That really they would, I just wanted to make sure that, that everybody hears that like the fourth graders that sort of maybe are still behind with reading because of COVID are going to be able to get benefit where they may not have. If we'd use the old model. Am I saying that right?
You're saying that correct.
Okay. Thank you.
But I think, I think the other piece of it is that there's also a curriculum change that's happening next year in grades one to four that I think are going to really support kids as well in a positive way, so. Sir, if you go to the slide, next one. This is where Beth is here, if you want to talk, Beth?
My turn. So I oversee more of the Title II funding, even though I, I sort of oversee Title I. Steve's in charge of the purse strings for that one. So we, as you can see at the bottom, our total allotment for Title II funding this coming year is about $223,050, roughly. So what we did back about two months ago, I put out a survey to staff asking them what professional development they would like to see in the coming summer as well as school year. So we took that into consideration as well as we held our, our district-wide CNA group meeting last Thursday and shared information with them and got some feedback that that particular group has community members, teachers, administrators. It has a nice diverse group of them to help us also fine-tune like what is the professional development that we think, that we feel that staff needs. So one of the biggest ones is the content area professional development. That's a big one because you have health and PE teachers, you have world language teachers and art teachers and music teachers. They're very specific in what they need with their professional development. Not always something we can find locally. Sometimes it needs them to go to a conference, whether it's MAPHerd for PhysEd or. So we need funding to allow them to do that so that they can continue to grow their, their talents and their practice as well as sort of meet other people like them. Sometimes it's very isolating, especially like for world language, when you're only two or three in a big district. It's nice to be able to make those connections. So there's many pieces to that, that professional development puzzle. But, so that was content-specific, but then staff also said that they wanted some more like instructional framework professional development. So what that would be, would be, how do you teach reading in a science classroom? Or, you know, something different, what are some different teaching strategies that you can help struggling students? So that's not specific to content areas, but more maybe different levels. Because how you teach reading for a 10th grader looks very different than how you teach reading for a second grader. So it gives us the ability, the funding to sort of differentiate that a little bit. Another area that was identive, well, our math coach, our K-4 math coach, she supports all three of our elementary schools. She's sort of the data guru for our math, works with the title math teachers as well as general ed teachers and special ed teachers to help get our kids the support they need. So she's part of this Title II funding. And then we moved on to multi-tiered systems of support. So that was some professional development that sort of encompassed data, understanding where to get the data, what the data is telling us, how to use it for interventions to support our students. This also includes the BAR grant, continuing professional development for that group of staff at the high school. We have staff that want to work and become better at communicating with their parents. And sometimes that just takes some practice and a little training about how you have those good conversations and sometimes difficult conversations. So that was an area they focused on. And working on behavior plans. This is a little bit for the teachers, but I think a little bit more for the admin as they have to sort of take on that role of creating those behavior plans where we'll no longer have behavior coaches within the district. And then student engagement and motivation was another area that people wanted some professional development support. I have to find it on my paper, I'm sorry. That includes trauma-informed staff, working with students who are dealing with trauma, regulated classrooms, staff wellness, and then restorative practices is also a continuation of our work in the district. So they, there's different components with many pieces underneath each. And that's kind of how we've allocated the funding in order to support our staff in the best way possible for next year, so. And we're also utilizing our regionalization professional development to help support staff even more in a more cost-effective way. So, so that's where we are with that.
As we look at Title III funding, like I mentioned earlier, that's the first time we've had that funds, those funds. $11,303, and we're going to use that money for professional development for staff on how to work with our ESOL students. Staff ask for professional development and we have some opportunities for them this summer.
Can I just ask one question about the staff, the funding? I know that we had talked about, I'm not sure if it was, it was after the conference that Mr. Nelson, you and Mr. B and I attended. We had talked, or I, we, there was discussion around that AI conference this summer in June in Washington DC and just sort of the new information about how education can change and make things easier for our teachers, actually. And just sort of like with their plans and just really helping them with like time and cutting their time in half. Have, do we have any staff? Oh, awesome.
We do, we have some professional development planned through the regionalization. A tech, a tech director, and I forget the district, I'm sorry, offered their time to do some AI training professional development for staff this summer. So I think it'll be really exciting. And it is something definitely that they've wanted, so we will continue to work that through our ERDs throughout the year too to help.
And we had a number of staff this winter go to Gray New Gloucester, wasn't it?
Yeah, there was, there was an AI summit that was put on, I went, it was amazing. There was a dozen of us that went. So I would definitely send enough, another group to, or it was Portland or Gray New Gloucester, something in January. They're having it again, so.
I mean, that, just for the school committee members, like for next year, when they, to go to that conference because it was, the main speaker was phenomenal, talking about how AI is just literally changing education and just helping our, our teachers, so. And I'm, I'm hoping that that would be able to use that sort of funding for that education.
Yes, yep.
So with federal funds, we have to allow for public comment. So we are going to add in, Beth has some more specifics in regards to how the Title II funds are being spent. She's going to put a link in there. And we're going to put on our website this presentation to allow folks to see how we're spending our federal funds and allow them an opportunity to send us comments if they have comments. And then on our June 3 meeting, during public comment, we just have to list that we are taking public comments on our federal funds. So we'll put that out.
June 10th.
June 10th. Sorry, moved it up a week, June 10th. Good?
Have any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Steve, thank you, Beth, nice job.
Sir, do you want to try that video? Can you press pause before you press play? Make it big, yeah. So I wanted to share with you this, this evening, a video that was created by some folks from the, some students from the Sanford High Theater Club. This was made possible by Maine Health and the Maine Prevention Network. The grant was awarded to Sanford High School to create a PSA in regards to vape use amongst students. And Emma is actually in the video. So I thought I would share this with you this evening. This is hot off the press. We just got this on Friday, so press play.
As teenagers, we are faced with new choices every day. Choices that define who we are and how the world sees us.
We get to decide what clothes we wear.
Who we hang out with, how we speak to people.
And what we put into our bodies.
In a recent study by the CDC, 28.7% of participating Maine high school students admitted to vaping in the past 30 days.
If that sample is a true indicator of Maine teens, that's approximately 15,000 students.
15,000 students are using to harm their bodies with the harsh chemicals and addictive drugs found in vapes.
When we choose to vape, we are choosing to let go of the things that make us unique.
We are making the decision to compromise our long-term health for the illusion of fitting in.
We become just another statistic.
But every day is a fresh start and we can make better choices.
It's not just about saying no to vaping.
It's about saying yes to a vibrant, healthier you.
Choose health.
Choose hope.
Choose you.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Emma, with that, well done. We wanted, as Steve mentioned, that was hot off the press. And so there were a couple of reasons we wanted to show that. One, with this possibly being Emma's last meeting, we could embarrass her again. But also wanted to point out that our Vape and Tobacco Task Force and the Sanford School Department received recognition last Thursday during Maine Health Partners for a Health of Communities York County Community Meeting in Kennebunk. This recognition was for our efforts in reducing vape use among students through the interdisciplinary work of the Vape Tobacco Task Force. And that includes various school staff and members of Maine Health's Prevention Team. Steve Bucier has led the team and they've worked hard to update the universal curriculum, align discipline practices to include restorative and educational components, provide intensive supports through substance use counseling for students experiencing tobacco and vape addiction, and implement student awareness programs. And so we just saw what they did and we were able to present it with this little plaque that we accept. So kudos to our work throughout the district with our students and staff and kudos to our task force and community that's really done a lot of great work on that, that's being recognized. And thank you, Steve, for leading that effort for it.
So I just have another short piece for you guys tonight. So I wanted you to see the first glimpse of the Summer Fun brochure that Sam Bonzi and I have been working on. I found the links and the information and he made it look good. So I was very pleased with that. So we just wanted to give you guys a look. We have some different things, we'll have links for our local city libraries. They both have different reading programs going on. I know Sheila from the Springville Library has been making her rounds at our elementary school, which has been really good the past couple of weeks. There's Boomer's Challenge that's going on. Then we found some activities, things people, families can do inside the house with technology, without technology, things they can do outside of the house that cost little to no money. Just some different, when your kids are looking at you with that look like I'm bored and I want you to do something with me, you can be like, let me just click on this. We also have links to the Sanford-Springville Reg Department, the WAI, the Backpack Program, any information that they'll be sharing over the summer, as well as our breakfast and lunch programs, the where, the when, and hopefully the what, as soon as I can get the lunch calendars from them. So Sam and I have it on our calendars every couple of weeks. We're going to throw something new on there, maybe Fourth of July activities around town and just, just keep sending it out to parents to let them know that it's there and keep adding something a little different. So if you guys think of anything that might be out there that we can put on there, please let me know. So I will be sending that out this week to kind of get a head start before the Memorial Day weekend. And then, like I said, we'll keep doing it every couple of weeks after that. Any questions?
No, that's awesome.
All right. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to new business.
So at this time, if we could have Matt Peterman, the Director of Sanford Regional Technical Center, come forward. I think I highlighted this in our last meeting with the update from our latest Sanford Regional Technical Center Advisory Committee, that we do have some updating of the SIP codes that are necessary for us to take, to be changed. In order for that to happen, it needs formal school committee approval before Matt can bring this to the Maine Department of Education. So Matt, I'll turn it over to you if you want to tee this up.
All right, thank you. I'm Matt Peterman, the Director of the Sanford Regional Technical Center. And I'm going to talk about first two changes of our SIP codes. And SIP stands for Classification of Instructional Program. So those are the codes that, the standards we follow for each of the programs. It's also what ties us to the monies we get from the state. So this is a process. And one of the reasons why they have us go through this process is because they provide funding for us upfront. And so it's about a year and a half process to make changes. So the changes you would be approving, I have to then put into an application which goes to the DOE and it would start in 24, or sorry, 25, 26. So it would be the following school year, not this upcoming one. So first up, we have our two programs that are existing. We have our Digital Design Program and our Engineering Applications and Robotics. Digital Design falls under an old code, which is 10.0305, which is Graphic Printing and Equipment Operator. So your old traditional presses, things like that, copy machines, that technology. Part of what we're needing to do is keep up with the times. We're looking to make that a 50.04, or 02, which is Commercial Art, which deals with a lot of the digital applications of art now. It still lets you go into the screen printing. It still lets you go into the screen printing and the things that we still do in the program, but it includes now the 3D animation, the digital art that we do on a daily basis. The other program, Engineering Applications in Robotics, still uses the SIP code 470101, which is Electronics, Equipment, Installation, and Repair. Your traditional television repairman. I don't know when the last time you hired a TV repairman, but, um, they've kind of went by the wayside. So what we're updating to is 15 dot 0001, which is Engineering Technologies, which allows you to explore the field of engineering. So we're just updating those two programs to get them up to the times.
So am I making a motion to accept your, your recommendation?
Yeah, the motion would be to approve the update of the CIP code in Digital Design to 50 point 0402 and our Engineering Technologies to 15 point 0001. We have to be technical in terms of what that is.
Yes.
So that, that would be, um, the motion that we are seeking.
So I will make that motion as recommended by Matt.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Okay, those were for the existing programs and now Matt also has something coming forward to, uh, potentially for some new programs.
Correct. And so our, as Matt said, our Technical Advisory Committee, uh, voted unanimously to add two programs for 25, 26. Those two programs would be Baking and Pastry, which is a 12 dot 0501, and Athletic Training, which is 51 dot 0913. Both of those programs, we would have existing rooms in which we can use. Uh, Baking and Pastry, we're already pretty much set with equipment, so it was kind of an easy one. One of the things that I had to do was send out a survey that went out to 5th through 12th grade at all of our sending schools. So there was, uh, pretty much an emphatic yes, that students would love to have baking and pastry. Not sure if it's because of what they're watching on TV, but they're definitely excited about that one. And Athletic Training was another one of our high boat getters. What we do is we look at, um, I'm interested, yes, maybe, and then you have the no's. And for the most part, um, you look at the yeses and maybes as potential students. And what you want to try and see is that every year, we would be able to get the number of kids we need in the program. And I would say with both of those, we would have no problem.
I would just want to add, as Matt mentioned, those are kind of easy lifts for us because sometimes when you're looking to add programs, you run into challenges around space and, and, um, those types of things. For us, when the school was built, uh, through the culinary program, there was plans in place there for the baking and pastry. And then an athletic training, one with already what we have for the athletic training facilities there that are used usually after school for our, uh, athletic teams. Once again, it's going to be, I think, a nice fit there for us to be able to do this in a way that's going to meet the expressed need, but also do it in a way that, uh, can fit within the existing, um, footprint of our school.
I'm, I'll make a motion to approve Baking and Pastry with SIP code 12 dot 0501 and Athletic Training with SIP code 51 dot 0913 as new programs at the Sanford Regional Technical Center for school year 2025 to 2026.
I'll second that. Great, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Can I ask a question? It didn't impact me with my vote, but, um, is it, are both of these a one-year or a two-year?
I believe both are two. Baking and Pastry, definitely. Athletic Training, Bitterford is, is doing that right now. They've got a year or two head start on us, so I'm, I'm working with, uh, Paul Abano over at Bitterford to see what fits best, likely to be a two-year program.
I was, I was hoping you were going to say one, just because the CNA program is a one-year and if they're looking in the medical field, they could do a one-year and a one-year.
Absolutely.
Just, I'm just thinking aloud, so.
Yeah, I think there is some flexibility there. With it being such a new program in the state, there's an opportunity to, if there's, you can cover enough in that first year, it could be a, a good opportunity to do both.
Because when I think about athletic training, it's not just athletic training, it could be future occupational therapists, physical therapists that may do the CNA, because that's really the only thing we offer right now, other than EMT. So it would be nice if it's one-year, but that's my two cents.
Matt, you prepared just quickly to talk about next steps after we've done this formal, uh, approval, uh, here?
Yes, um, so once I have the minutes, I attach that to, um, a fairly lengthy application, which we already have all the data for. It just talks about what standards you're looking to, uh, do. It asks me to build out a budget as to what we will need because typically when those new programs come in, they will fund us for the first three years. Then after that, they use our three-year average for enrollment to base our, our monies off after that. So I need to be a little bit strategic and I'll, I'll work with, uh, Cheryl on trying to project out what we'll need for supplies and stuff, because they will take that number, even if it's higher than what we are supposed to get for the program, because it's new, they'll give us that. So it's looking ahead three years from now, what we need to do. So I have to have those in by June 20th. That won't be a difficult task as we now have the final piece tonight.
And, you know, I think the other thing to point out is this is a change that, um, the DOE has done when it comes to CTE programming. You heard our presentation earlier this evening from the electrical wiring. Here's a situation where in the past, you used to, as a school department, have to come up with the funds for the program and then you would only be reimbursed two years later. And there's where you see the financial challenges with that. Here, the system with the way that it's working is going to be able to help that stuff upfront and for us to be able to, um, to, uh, start and, and, and implement these programs.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Matt.
Thank you all.
Summer nominations?
Sure. So we're in the hiring season and, uh, as we hit that. And so typically, um, we do have a one meeting coming up on June 10th. Usually we meet, uh, the first and third. This year with the, um, Senior Awards Night on Monday, June 3rd. We're going to just meet on June 10th. That being said, uh, we're already upfront with hiring, so, uh, this is something that the school committee has done in the past to allow me as the superintendent to offer teaching contracts during the months of June, July, and August for the unfilled positions for the upcoming 2024, 2025 school year. Uh, that was something that we usually do at this meeting to, uh, put that in, uh, put that in place.
I make a motion to allow, uh, Superintendent Menethen to offer teaching contracts during June, July, and August for unfilled positions for the 2024 and 2025 school year.
Thank you. I second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Naming rights?
Yeah, next up, we have, uh, some, uh, naming rights. The, um, Sanford Schools Legacy Foundation, uh, has been hard at work. And so, um, we have a recommendation this evening to accept a donation from the Sanford Schools Legacy Foundation and to approve a request to name the library at Margaret Chase Smith School in the name of Sharon Remick, Sharon Remick. And, uh, you may know Sharon Remick was a long-time, uh, teacher and administrator, uh, in the Sanford School Department. So this was something that we think is going to be a, a great honor, uh, for Sharon. And, um, so we need to formally, um, accept that and approve that this evening, um, to formally move forward with that.
All righty, I will move, um, I will make a motion to accept a donation from the Sanford Schools Legacy Foundation and approve a request to name the library at Margaret Chase Smith in the name of Sharon Remick, as presented.
I second that motion. Thank you very much. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
So that, um, just to, if Sharon recently passed away, and I will say that we were able to let Sharon know before she passed away that this was, uh, something that was going to be done in her honor. And, uh, she was greatly, greatly touched, um, for that. We will be having the ceremony, uh, to name the library and that's going to be later this month. It's scheduled for Thursday, May 30th. Thursday, May 30th, at Margaret Chase Smith Library, 3:30. All who are interested, uh, will be able to, um, attend. And the formal program is scheduled to start around 3:45 or 3:50. And, um, hope to see everyone there.
Thank you. What a great honor. I think that's wonderful that she was able to, to know that. Yep. Okay, Cheryl, you're on.
April financials. It's crazy that it's almost the end of the school year, uh, school year and end of fiscal year. It seemed to go by really fast. So, uh, right now we have, um, we're under budget by approximately $2 million, but a lot of that is actually, um, a third payroll that's in August. So that will, um, definitely not be there when it's at the end of the month, I mean, at the end of the fiscal year. Um, we're running right close to what we were last year and last year we came pretty close to our year-end amount. And so I think we'll be similar this year. Uh, revenue, we're approximately right now at $1.4 million above where we were last year. Um, most of that is, of course, the additional subsidy that we got and some tuition, um, that was up a little bit this year for acting. Excuse me. Uh, federal grants were, have $1.8 million in revenue and $1.7 million in expenses. So everything is going according to plan there. And, uh, the enterprise funds, which are all your Adult Ed, uh, School Nutrition and Performing Arts Center, is currently, uh, revenue of $2.3 million and expenses of $2.3 million. SR funds, we're running right now with a revenue of $2 million and, um, expenses of $2 million. A lot of that is, um, we had billed out a bunch of, uh, SR2 money and we're a little, we got a couple of months to bill for SR3. We're waiting for the DOE to prove our invoices. So revenue for the other funds, which are some of our major funds, um, $670,000 in revenue and $1 million in expense. A lot of that is RUS grant and MLTI. We've received our MLTI amount, um, or had an expense, but we haven't gotten the money in yet. So that's one of those things that is a timing. And RUS grant, of course, we had all the revenue last year to go against that. We still have a few more expenses on RUS grant that we're waiting on. Article 1, we're running about $138,000 below budget. And then we're running, um, $277,000 above last year. I think right now, I look at this and we're going to run closer to budget this year than we did last year, is how I'm seeing this falling through. Article 2, we're running, uh, $492,000 below budget. Some of it is just timing of payments. So I'm not thinking we're going to have a huge amount of being under budget, but, um, we're running about $278,000 above last year. The timing of those invoices have actually been, um, more consistent this year than last year, from some of the outside placements and stuff. Article 3, um, we're running, um, a little bit below budget, um, $422,000 in, um, or above last year of $128,000. A lot of that is timing on invoices and utilities. Are running a little different than last year. We had a milder winter, so in some pieces, I'm seeing that those are kind of a little bit under budget. So we'll see if it catches up. But I'm thinking that's going to come pretty close to budget. Article 4, um, is about $57,000 right now under budget and we're running about $20,000 above last year. That one is also, um, uh, waiting for a bill that's coming in that I know is here and it's, um, in the process that we're waiting for, so we're running different from last year. Article 5, um, everything seems to be running just about the same as last year, other than we have that one person that we pay this year on a July to June contract versus a September to August. So that makes that a little different, um, but everything's right on track to be at budget. Article 6, um, we're running about $46,000 below budget and we're running about $41,000 above last year. It's all running right in about similar compared to what the budget was last year. So I had to see that falling in the same as last year. Article 7, uh, school administration, right now we're probably as close as you can be, uh, $6,000 difference from budget and we're running about $48,000 above budget. A lot of that is, um, expected and, um, we're just, we're running closer to the budget this year. Article 8, um, we're running slightly above budget, um, and a lot of it is the homeless and the special ed transportation increases. I think we might be slightly over budget in this article, but in other articles will be slightly under budget. So I'm thinking that's going to be fine. Last year it ran a slightly above budget also in transportation. Article 9, um, we, um, are right now under $641,000 below budget, but that's because of all the costs we had for Willard Building last year. So it's skewing our budget percentage slightly. So we're running within budget for that. That large payments of Willard Building that we had to do at the beginning of the year last year is skewing the percentages slightly. Debt, we're at budget, 100% of budget right now, because, uh, that one's pretty easy to, uh, budget, because we know our expenses. And, uh, so we're $95,000 below last year and that's interest. Our Article 11, we're running about $21,000 below budget and $30,000, um, above last year. That's the difference of having WSSR TV costs as part of the methodology change that we did in that. And that is expected to come in at budget. Adult education is also, um, a change in methodology, which was, um, right now we're running about $10,000 below budget and, um, we're less than last year by about $35,000, but that's due to the methodology change in, um, in personnel. And that is the financials. Any questions?
Any questions?
I'll make the recommendation to approve the two, I'm sorry, the April 2024 financials as presented.
Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Thank you, Cheryl. We have contracts?
Sure. So, um, next up, uh, under new business is, um, the approval of, um, new contracts for, uh, the Sanford Federation of Teachers and also a, a contract for ed techs. And so, um, we have two of those this evening that we have reached, uh, tentative agreements with, uh, through the negotiating committees. Uh, we started negotiating back at the beginning of November and that's been a long process, but it's been a very good process as we've worked and continued with the negotiating teams, uh, for the teachers and the ed techs. We are, um, uh, taking our approval this evening. We just reached those tentative agreements at the end of last week, knowing that this is a meeting, um, our next meeting is not till June 10th. We, uh, put this on, uh, tonight's agenda. And we are going forward first before the, um, U- Teachers Union or Ed Tech Union is taking their action. It's not any different when that happens. There's no particular order in terms of how this happens. We're doing that. Uh, I know the, um, uh, union with the teachers and ed techs are going to be presenting- I know the union with the teachers and ed techs are going to be presenting the contracts this Wednesday for information, and they hope to have a vote on their end by the end of this week or beginning of next week. Time is not in our favor here. We want to move to move forward on this, because we are now in a situation where it's a hiring season, so it's some of those people, as our contract does expire at the end of this, at the end of August, and so we're going to want to be able to have something in place to be able to do that. Want to thank Jen Davie and Amy Seventy for their work on the negotiating teams on our end, especially Cheryl Fornier as well, for all of your efforts as we're doing this. There are some things that were really important, and any negotiation, you're going to be able to do best. I know we're trying to always do everything that we can to give everything that our employees deserve, but we've also got to balance that with what the capacity is of our committee and the capacity of our taxpayers in terms of that. And so, I'm proud of the agreements this evening. We had an executive session earlier before tonight's meeting, where we were able to dig into those into more detail. I'll give some overviews, that both of the contracts are three-year contracts, looking for that. For us, we wanted to make sure that our wages and benefits were very competitive with school departments that were similar to the Sanford School Department and similar to our area schools. I think that's something that we were looking at doing. We want to be able to attract, and we want to be able to retain the best in terms of our employees. And a lot of the things that are in the contract for that allow us to be able to do that. That's everything from, as we look at what wages are for new employees or employees with less experience. We also wanted to expand the steps that were offered in the teaching contract. That was something that was a barrier for us when it came to being able to hire people who had experience and were interested in coming to Sanford. Also, we realize in paying competitive wages, we also know the impact of health insurance and the health insurance costs, and that was something that we were able to, both groups coming back, knowing that that's never easy to be able to do that, we were able to work that. Obviously, longevity is another piece that is important to our membership, and so that's something that also is being able to come back and impact here. And then there's also wanting to make sure that we're following all the laws that are coming in into place with that. So, that's kind of an overview in terms of the contracts. As I said, the timing of this is not anything in particular, it's more of just when our meeting is, in the hopes that the school committee approves this evening, and then hopes in terms of the unions taking up on it later this week or the beginning of next week, that will allow us to be able to, upon successful ratification, be able to get our contracts out as we wrap up the end of the school year for that. I don't know if there's any other questions, but looking to take action this evening to approve both the contracts as presented for both the teachers and the ed techs.
I'll make a motion to ratify the contracts as presented. I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor. Okay. Moving forward, we don't have any old business to discuss. Next are resignation, staff appointments, staff transfers.
Sure, we've got some resignations to announce. Stephen Hartford, custodian sub, Jen Murphy, third-grade teacher at MCS. Lindsay Goodwin, ed tech two, over at Sanford Pride. And one retirement, Donna Cormier, school counseling administrative assistant at Sanford High School. Want to thank Donna for all of her many years of service to the Sanford School Department, and how she's been able also to be such a resource for students and staff and for families for many, many years. I wish nothing but the best for Donna as she moves into retirement. Staff appointments, David McCall, varsity girls soccer. Michael Walker, second shift custodian at the high school and SRTC. And Nancy Miller, ed tech three, the technology specialist at the high school and SRTC. And then we have some summer appointments. Extended school year teacher, Amy Green Lamb. Extended school year ed tech two, Vicky Thing. Extended school year ed tech three, Michelle Roy. Extended school year ed tech three, Angel Madison. Extended school year ed tech one, Tiffany Gemery at CJL. Julia Rose, Jared Artgard, extended school year ed tech. And Angela Kepner, extended school year ed tech two. Few transfers to announce, Sarah Deschambault, from a first-grade teacher at MCS to a coach intervention position at CJL. Kristy Cowley, moving from a literacy coach at CJL and Pride over to a literacy coach interventionist at Pride. Maria Scalfani, from literacy coach at MCS and Pride to the literacy coach interventionist at MCS. And then Tony Warren, as a second shift custodian at the middle school, moving over to second shift at the high school and technical center. Last meeting in May, we approved our teachers moving to continuing contract and second year probationary. This evening, we take up administrator nominations, nominating Mike Bailey, Sanford Middle School Assistant Principal. Sherry Baron, Carl J. Lamb, School Principal. Stacy Bissel, Special Ed Director. Kristen Daly, Sanford Pride Assistant Principal. Tammy Delaney, Assistant Special Ed Director. Amanda Doyle, Sanford High School Principal. Tracy Halasy, Margaret Chase Smith School Principal. Susan Emmon, Sanford Pride Principal. Beth Lambert, Director of Curriculum. Trish Lee, Carl J. Lamb, Assistant Principal. Pam Lyden, Sanford Middle School. Joe Mistracchio, Sanford Middle School Assistant Principal. Rosen McGuckin, Margaret Chase Smith Assistant Principal. Jane Perkins, Community Adult Education Director. Matt Peterman, SRTC Director. Mike Redman, SRTC Assistant Director. Zach Lemlin, Athletic Director. Aaron Tremblay, Sanford High School Assistant Principal. And Troy Watt, Sanford High School Assistant Principal. And one that I made a mistake and didn't include, Beth Laterno as the Director of School Counseling for the district. We took this from our last year piece, and we hadn't included Beth on that, so my apologies, but we would like to add Beth Laterno to the staff nominations as Director of School Counseling. And I'll be looking for a, I think typically, we've taken a vote on that. I don't see that in the agenda with that, so looking for a, a...
Motion.
Motion, thank you. I was going to say nomination, but a motion to take the nominations as presented.
I'll make a motion to accept the nominations as presented.
Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor.
I'm just going to not, because of my sister.
Oh.
I forgot, abstain, that's the word. Thank you, SAT word, not my vocab tonight.
So do I need to repeat it again?
No.
Nope, we're good. Okay. Okay, now we're moving on to policies and procedures. Steve?
Okay. Second readings for policy this evening. At policy BIB, which is School Committee Professional Development Opportunities. To the list of topics for professional development for the school committee, it adds governance, team decision-making, and the efficient use of parliamentary procedures. Policy KBF, which is our Title I District Level Parent Involvement Policy with the accompanying procedure, KBF-dash-E. Both that policy and procedure, it takes out the reference to Title I students, and applies it to all students and identify Title I school as we move to a school-wide model. Policy JLCD, which is Administration of Medication to Students. The big change there is, it adds a piece about administration of overcome medication for overnight school field trips. And the last policy and procedure are JKAA and JKAA-dash-R, which is the use of physical restraint in the procedure that accompanies that. The changes to that policy brings us in line with the current rules and regulations from the main Department of Education, and I recommend those for a second approval.
Okay. I make a motion to approve policies BIB, KBF, KBF-dash-E, JLCD, JKAA, and procedure JKAA-dash-R as presented.
Seconded.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? All in favor.
And for first readings this evening, we have three policies, KBF, and they're all dash E two. One is a relation to Carl J. Lamb School, one's for Margaret Chase Smith School, and one is for Sanford Pride Elementary School. And these are parent involvement policies for each individual school, which are required under the Title I regulations. The policies, the key elements of the policies are a school-parent compact, which outlines the shared responsibilities for academic success, opportunities for parents to be involved, such as volunteering or attending conferences, regular communication from schools about events and student progress, training and resources to help parents support their child's learning at home, and ensuring information and opportunities are accessible to all parents, regardless of their language or disability barriers. And I recommend first reading of those policies.
Steve, nothing's really changed on these, right? Because I read them, and they were, we do that, we do that, so.
Nothing's really changed.
Okay.
It's just focused on each individual school, and each school has sort of tailored it. There's some subtle languages, if you get to the bottom.
Okay.
The second part of that. The first part is consistent.
Okay.
But when you get to the school compacts, that's where the individual school flavor is in there.
Yeah. Yeah. Right. So I make a motion to approve the policy KBF-dash-E two, Title I Family Engagement for CJL, MCS, and SPE as presented.
I second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor. Thank you, Steve. There are no items for future agendas right now and calendar announcements.
Sure. Coming up tomorrow afternoon, three o'clock, the JMG program at Sanford High School will have their closing ceremony in the Performing Arts Center. This Thursday is a Rising Fifth Grade Parent Information Night. That begins at five o'clock over at the middle school. SRTC is having their recognition night this Thursday. That location is not Partners Bank Gymnasium. We are looking to have that at Alumni Stadium, starting at six PM. And, right, we'll keep our fingers crossed for the weather. SRTC Health Occupations Pending Ceremony is Tuesday, May twenty-eighth. That's also in the Performing Arts Center, starting at six. Special Ed Advisory Committee meeting Wednesday, the twenty-ninth, at Adult Education, beginning at two fifteen. The middle school JMG program, their closing ceremony is Wednesday, May twenty-ninth. The Sanford School Department Special Olympics will be Monday, June third, at CJL. The Sanford High School Athletic Awards Night is Monday, June, Sanford High School Awards Night. That's not Athletic Awards, that's a typo, sorry. The Awards Night is six o'clock on Monday, June third. Sanford High School Graduation is Wednesday, June fifth, Alumni Stadium, beginning at six. And Community Adult Education is Wednesday, June twelfth, at six PM. And also want to make people aware that the school budget referendum is Tuesday, June eleventh. If you're not going to be available on that day to vote, we ask that you vote in absentee, and those can be picked up right here at City Hall.
Okay. Well, without any further ado, I make a recommendation to adjourn this meeting at eight oh seven.
I second it.
All in favor? All in favor. Thank you, everybody. Yes. So now they're...